If the candidates would like to come and join their seats, now is the appropriate time.
Didn't even have to. I was throwing my voice.
That's it, that's it.
Yeah.
Alright Zach, we're doing district-specific seating, so you can pick either of those two seats.
Not alphabetical order by district?
No. Please figure you can make your own decision.
The climate forum there.
Into the heat of it, like in the term.
Bingle got here first, so he got to pick his seat, so that's you. Good to see you.
We're getting like a lot of form practices. Kate's over there.
Press if we could get you on stage. Alright, that's you. Perfect. And we'll kind of give direction on who goes where. Great, hello. It is 5:59. Just don't say passwords. Oh, yes, I do have to do within five minutes of six. I need to tell Val to turn the radio on. Uh, there will be audio and video available. Okay. I'm just waiting to make sure that she's seen that. And then, does everybody have what they're planning to use to time this timing?
Is my full run for beer sticker on my phone problematic?
No, I think it's fine.
Is that disrespectful?
Okay, are you guys already?
Okay, we're gonna get started, if that's good with everybody. Thank you so much for being here. We're at the lovely Central Public Library. Thank you so much to them for partnering with us to host this candidate forum. Um, I also have to thank KYRS for partnering on this candidate forum, and because this is being broadcasted live on the radio, I need to give a call sign. So, if you're tuning into this from your car or radio, you're listening to KYRS, Medical Lake Spokane, 92.3, 88.1. Um, I'm Erin, I'm with Range Media, a worker-owned news outlet here in town. You can read us online for free. And if you love engaging with local politics, you can join us for our Second Annual Politic Crawl, which is a politics-themed bar crawl. Um, next Friday. All of those details are on our website. And I'm joined by three other lovely local journalists and panelists.
Hey, everybody, I'm Sam Wolfow. I'm the news editor at The Inlander, the weekly here in town. Thank you to all of our candidates for joining us tonight. We appreciate having all six of you here at the same time.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Clarin Kirk, and I am a senior at Gonzaga and the managing editor of the Gonzaga Bulletin. And I appreciate everyone coming, and I'm really excited to be able to get to ask you guys some questions tonight.
Hi all, I'm Eliza Billingham. I work for Spokane Public Radio, which is Spokane's NPR affiliate. So rounding out the panel of media that is available to the public for free. That's kind of one of the themes of tonight. Um, I will say that NPR is free to access, but not free to produce. So if you are concerned about our funding, meet me afterwards. Um, but that's not what we're here for. We are here for our candidate forum, and it is really fantastic that all the candidates are here. So thank you so much for making time for this. I know this is the middle of campaigning season, so. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce everyone, and as I'm a radio reporter, I'm really gonna be embarrassed if I say your name wrong, but I think I can do this. So from District One, we have Jonathan Bingle and Sarah Dixit. From District Two, we have Alejandro Barrientos and Kate Tellis. And from District Three, we have Zach Zappone and Chris Savage. And so the format for tonight is gonna be a little bit different than your typical debate. We have three rounds, and each kind of have their own theme. So I'm gonna start with the first portion. Note for the candidates, throughout this whole evening, you get two rebuttals. But those rebuttals get a different amount of time depending on what round you use them. So this is not two rebuttals per round, this is two per total, two for the whole evening. This first portion, we're gonna have five questions for all districts, and then each district is gonna get its own two personal little questions. Each candidate is gonna get 90 seconds to answer. I am going to be timing this first round. I'm gonna give you a three when you have 30 seconds left. I'm gonna give you a one when you have 10 seconds left. And I'm gonna verbally interrupt you when your time is up. Um, although this is not a stand-up night, you don't have to fill the time. Um, so whatever you want, but I will cut you off. Um, your opponent will get a one-minute rebuttal if they so choose in this round. And we're gonna start with different districts answering different questions first. Panelists, am I missing anything before I get going? We have four total mics. So we're gonna start with District One. So if some of the other folks could pass mics down to District One. Oh, we got six mics! Amazing! Okay, great, never mind.
And just as a reminder on those rules on the rebuttal, every candidate will get 90 seconds to answer every question of these first five questions, as well as the two specific to your district. If you choose to do the rebuttal, you may raise your hand, and you can do that to respond to something your opponent said. Alright, Clarin.
Alright, thank you so much again. We are gonna start over with District One. We'll start with our incumbent. Um, our first question is, what do you believe the responsibility of the Spokane City Council is?
Yeah, no, this is a great question. So I'm gonna break it down into two things. What's City Council's responsibility, and what's mine? So, City Council's responsibility is we serve two main functions, right? We write the laws and we control the purse strings. So, all the policies that come out of the city are directed by us, and the budget is determined by us. And so, the mayor proposes the budget to us, but we ratify the budget. And trust me, there are a lot of back and forth in those situations to make sure that the, uh, the budget is successful for the city, or at least we try to make it as good as it can be. And then my job as a City Council member is really to educate and represent, okay? So if there are issues that are happening in the city, issues that are happening in the district, my job is to work with my neighborhood councils, work with my citizens, work with my business owners, help them to understand what's happening, and then get their feedback and take that back to City Hall, and make sure I do that. And so, I think that is my role as a representative of the district and my role on the City Council.
In addition to, I think, the things that, um, candidate Bingle said is that City Council is really responsible for being our first and last defense for what's going on nationally, and what's going on in our region. Um, so here locally, we're able to pass ordinances, pass resolutions, and things that are protecting our communities, and determining what is important to our, um, folks out here. So, doing things like ordinances to protect queer folks, trans folks, people who are seeking abortion access, all of that are things that City Council can do to make sure that there's stability in our region in comparison to what's happening nationally, especially with this administration. Um, and I think a big thing too with representation is that councils should be going to the people, not just that the people are coming to council meetings, because we know not everybody has the privilege of time to spend four or five hours on a Monday night, um, attending a meeting. So I think it's really important that City Councilors are also in community with people, and that they're not divorced from the whole, like, happenings of, uh, district.
Are you, we'll go to District Two now.
Reverb.
Hello?
It's Wireless Two.
Sing?
I don't wanna do that to the people here. It's, uh, Wireless Two?
Hello? Better, yes. Um, so I, I guess to add to what they said is, uh, I think the focus of our City Council members should be um, to really engage with the people in the community. Um, what I've been doing in the last four months since I've been running is really building a broad coalition of people from Democrats, Independents, and Republicans, so I know, uh, what people care about. Um, our district in District Two is, um, it has Independents, Democrats, and Republican. And what I wanna do is I wanna represent the people, because this is a nonpartisan position. Um, and these issues aren't red or blue, they're local issues, and so what I wanna do is uh, bring everybody to the table that care about Spokane, and find the middle ground solutions to the challenges that we face here in Spokane.
Testing. Hi, everyone. My name is Kate Tellis. I'm going to tag along a little bit, but, um, maybe in a different vein. Uh, we all know the three branches of government at the federal level. So the easiest way that I can describe something as far as what is City Council's role is we are the legislative body. We are the ones who are in charge of the laws, the policies. The mayor is the executive, the one who's in charge of implementing those policies and those rules. Um, so of course we do that, but really importantly, I have to say, is we are a voice for our constituents. And regardless of party, District Two is vastly different depending on what neighborhood council you go to. And I have to give props to the city for creating neighborhood councils, because it is probably one of the best ways for me as a candidate, as well as if I'm elected as an official, to understand what are the needs of East Central? What are the needs of Granville Thoreau? What are the needs of Latour Valley? What are the needs of Comstock? They're incredibly different. They're incredibly different in, um, socio- socio-economic status, they're different in infrastructure needs. And I really think that our job is to be a good communicator and take the needs of our constituents back up to see it addressed policy-wise. Thank you.
Alright, nope, green light on, but nothing. Alright, I guess.
That's, uh, Unit H2, just so you know back there. Um, this is Zach Zappone. Um, yeah, I think there's a lot of agreement on the legislative power of the City Council to pass a budget, set policies and laws. Um, there's also our representation on regional boards and governance. So that's Spokane Transit, Spokane Regional Transportation Commission, Visit Spokane. Um, a lot of different bodies that we represent, the citizens of Spokane. I represent you on the Association of Washington Cities, and the advocacy that we do at the state level for our city. Um, and I think that there's also the unsaid roles of City Council, and that's being the leader in our community, and representing our values in the community. Um, people turn to your council member for problems that they're having, experiences, issues that they're having, whether it's federal, local, state, whatever. We're at the frontlines, we're the people that you see in the grocery store, at the restaurants, at schools, and at, at the park. And so people come to us with their concerns, and I think it's our role to stand up for our values and advocate for those things at all levels of government, and making sure that we have leaders that reflect our values, to be an inclusive community where we all belong, and not trying to exclude people in our community. Another role that we play is facilitator and mediator. There's a lot of times that we have conflict and division in our community. I've done, uh, bringing people together to try to find a common way forward, whether that was, uh, reconciling issues between the Jewish community and the Muslim community, um, and homelessness, having roundtable discussions in this room with other 150 community members. And I'm now as simple as local as a street vacation, uh, around a church and school in the community, so that's what it is. Testing, one, two. Can you hear that?
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Savage. I am running for Spokane City Council, District Three, and I wanted to thank you all for being here this evening, taking some time out of your night to be here to look about the concerns and the policies that we all have. The role of City Council in our government is kind of gonna be more of what other people have said in the, already. We are the third branch of government, which is the legislative branch, that has a checks and balance on our executive as well as our judicial. So the role of our City Council is to make ordinances and non-binding resolutions that help us guide and make laws here in Spokane that we all follow by. Like, for instance, the water ordinance that people use, uh, for the summer. Or people, uh, for instance, like the Keep Washington Working Act, that's a non-binding resolution. We need to make sure that we are doing good laws that are coming out of City Hall, and that's the role of what City Hall does, is not only to make those laws, but also to go out, talk to our community members, make sure that we are gathering their concerns, and having their voices come back up to the council, and not make sure that we're doing our own personal agenda. That is why I think it is such a great advantage and a great opportunity that we have a neighborhood council system here in Spokane that has 29 neighborhood councils that allow us to get that kind of feedback every month. And that is what City Council role is here in Spokane, is not only be a representative of your district, but to make sure that you're an arbiter, you're a champion, and you're a defender for the people's rights and voices.
Fabulous job on time, all of you. Well done. Thanks so much. I'm gonna ask the second question, and we're gonna start with District Two. Alejandro, I think we'll start with you. Um, my question is, in September, Mayor Brown announced a $13 million budget deficit the city needs to close. What kind of contracts, programs, or jobs would you support cutting?
Um, well, I, I, I think the way that I look at this is how I operate in business, is, um, I've balanced budgets before in my professional career. And I think what we need to look at is, um, rate of return or return on investment. Um, I'm not familiar of, I, I know that there's a $13 million budget. I'm not familiar with jobs are being in question as far as cutting. But the way we need to look at it is what initiatives can we do to improve the quality of life, whether it's public safety, the unhoused population, or housing? Because those are the top three priorities that propel me to run. And how can we invest, uh, in those three issues to be able to grow a thriving economy here in Spokane? Be able to, uh, produce, uh, housing for people, not only that they can work, but live here in Spokane? And by balancing the budget is we need to look at what initiatives we can do now, and then prioritize those with clarity and transparency with the people, and then find creative initiatives to, um, do a public and private sector where we can, uh, support other initiatives. So I, I can't answer your question as far as what jobs we should cut, but I think that, uh, there's ways we can balance the budget where we have a greater return on investment.
Um, just to state for everyone, $13 million sounds like a huge deficit, and it is. Um, just to give a little perspective on that, though, just, uh, when the mayor inherited or stepped into her role, she had a $25 million budget deficit. So I think that gives a little bit of perspective. Um, I also know that most of this money is coming from personnel, um, employment. And so we need to look at that very carefully. These are people's jobs that are on the line. Um, I would also say, in the $13 million deficit, that doesn't include any sort of grants or funding we could receive from the state or other governments if we could potentially make that happen. And as, um, Councilmember Zappone said, we are in some unprecedented times constitutionally, and we need to do everything that we can at a city level to protect our rights and our freedoms. And so I believe that we need to focus most on the next three years and how to, how to protect Spokane from the national issues of the day.
You can hear me now? Alright. Um, yeah, there's some really hard discussions that we need to have. Uh, we've been looking at the budget. 13 million's about 5% of the general fund of about $250 million. And 70% of our general fund goes to public safety. That's police and fire. On top of that, another 8% goes to parks, and that's a requirement from the city charter. And so, there are some really hard conversations we need to have, because we've been trying to find every way to be efficient. Um, I believe there are still efficiencies that we need to do, and, and ways that we can do that, and that starts in the City Council office ourselves, on ways that we could be more efficient to meet the needs. Uh, I'm gonna prioritize the needs that I hear in our community, and that's around safer streets, safer neighborhoods, affordability, and housing. Those are the things that we have to prioritize to make sure that we're growing, and our middle class, and growing, uh, opportunities for people. Um, I'm also concerned because we can't just look at cuts. Uh, that's the reality of the situation that we're stuck with, because the city is limited by what we're able to do in revenue. Uh, that's from the state and the requirements around that. Um, I think we need to be looking at opportunities and have advocated for revenue, where we're taxing the wealthiest in Washington, who are getting tax cuts from the, uh, big beautiful bill, and are getting wealthier in our community while everyone else in our community is struggling to get ahead. We're losing jobs, losing services on our street. We're talking about serious reductions that are gonna impact everyone in our community. And so we need to be advocating for these changes, both to our state and to our federal delegation. So we stop fighting for pennies and start making some real improvements and investments in our community for working and middle-class families.
So I've identified about 20 positions that are in the City Council that can be cut, and we can actually make sure that we are actually saving about $2 to $3 million worth on our general funds. We, in our general fund, we have about 90%, which is salary-personnel costs. So we really need to look heavily on our salary positions to see what is redundant and cut that down. We have plenty of people there that are just doing the same job over and over again, and that is inefficient for your tax dollars. One of the positions that I think that we should take out is our parliamentarian on the City Council. We all know, need to know Robert's Rules of Orders and how to run our own City Council meetings, and we don't need someone that's paid $100,000 a year plus benefits to tell us how to run our meetings. The second position that I've looked into is the Communications Director for the Spokane City Council. We don't need anyone talking for us. We all pretty much talk well for ourselves. We have social media. We are contacted by news media outlets almost constantly, so those are just two examples of the 20 positions that I've identified that will lead to about $2 to $3 million worth of savings. And yes, that's only putting a dent in the best budget deficit, but we need to do everything and anything we can to make sure that we're looking at everything to bring down the budget in the most, uh, pos- best possible way, so that we're saving you all money and we're not reducing services in the future. Yeah, 13 and a half million is a pretty rosy projection, actually, of our, of our actual budget deficit. Uh, when you consider that we actually, we're gonna have to stand up our own animal control, that's gonna be an extra million and a half. Depending on what happens with Shrek, we're gonna have to stand up our own, uh, PSAP, which is $100 million over the next five years, when you start talking about the differences that we're having with the jail and all that kind of stuff. I think our deficit is far worse than that, and while the mayor did inherit a budget deficit of $25 million, uh, we did pass an $8 million tax increase last year that was promised to go to public safety, and that evaporated into the general fund. And so while we, uh, you know, maybe some folks wanna be looking at, uh, tax increases, I would definitely take a look and see if those tax increases are actually gonna make a difference, because I don't think you've been given, uh, what you've, uh, what you've been told you were gonna get for your tax increases. But, specific cuts that we would do, I would cut all homeless funding out of the general fund. We spend about $5 million a year out of our general fund. Houston, which is often the city, looked at for how they're doing it and doing it well. They spend absolutely zero dollars out of their general fund. There's $5 million right there. I would institute a travel ban for all city, uh, employees, especially electeds, until we figure out what's going on with our budget. Because while our mayor is in Ireland, you know, frolicking over there, we have serious problems here. We need to, uh, get rid of that. Um, and when we're talking about that doesn't include any grants, that also means that we could be losing serious federal funding. Um, and we need to, to really look at that and figure out the ways that we would replace that funding, or maybe stop some of our bad fights with the federal government.
That's your time, thanks.
To Zach's point, I think we need to look broader and see how we're not, as you said, pinching pennies, because our state is one of the most regressive tax codes in the nation. Um, and we know that through sales tax, that is heavily a burden on working-class people, people who are living paycheck to paycheck, and that's simply not, um, okay for us to continue to rely on sales tax as our only method of receiving more revenue. Um, the city can also do things when it comes to property taxes, but we also know that's becoming high for families to be able to afford that. Um, so something else we can do is a payroll tax, and I think that is something we could look into for the highest earners here in Spokane. Um, I don't know if we've done something like that before, but I think looking into that would help in terms of our sustainability as a community, because we know Spokane's growing. Um, especially when we think of the impact of climate change. We have people moving into our community who are wanting to have a home here. Um, just the other day, we were talking to someone at the doors, and her and her family moved here from the Bay Area, 'cause they felt the impact of climate change there, and wanted to live somewhere climate resilient. So, we need to be able to look forward and make sure that we're not just constantly trying to do line item after line item, but making sure that we have a long-term solution.
Rebuttal, please.
Absolutely. Wait. Okay, go.
I think what you heard, what I heard was, "Not a single cut out of that, and just raising your taxes, raising your taxes, raising your taxes." Okay? When I'm at the doors talking to people, they're talking about cost of living. They're talking about affordability. They're talking about all these things. And instead of us looking seriously in the mirror and doing what every family across town is having to do, which is tighten their belt in, in tough economic times, instead of us as a city doing that, we continue to go out and say, "Guys, it's a revenue problem," right? The state just passed $9 billion in extra taxes. Your taxes are already going up. The Climate Commitment Act adds 75 cents a gallon between, uh, the Climate Commitment Act itself and the gas tax that we have. I mean, you're being taxed to death already. We don't need more money. Spokane does not have a revenue problem, it has a spending problem, and we need to figure that out. I have been able to work on a budget where we don't actually lose any positions in the city, okay? And that's one of the reasons why I'm endorsed by our three largest unions.
All right, we're going to keep it up with switching the order of which district starts with the question, so we'll go to District Three to start with this question. When the Inlanders spoke with leaders from neighborhood councils across the city last year, we asked what they would do if they had $100,000 to invest in something in their neighborhood. The overwhelming response was to invest in traffic calming. How should the city improve pedestrian safety and address speeding and other dangerous driving behaviors? We'll go to you for a sec.
Yeah, really quick, I do have to say that the mayor did pay her own dollars to go to Ireland, and that I also want to clarify, too, that taking $5 million from homelessness would be $5 million out of the system. Not sure how that's going to benefit. And Councilmember Bingle's been on council and has not offered cuts since he's been on council for four years. So just want to clarify that. Traffic calming is one of the most important things that I have been an advocate for in our community.
Are we debating cross-districts or are we debating our own folks?
I think the rebuttals are only in districts. So this is just part of your time on this, the response to this question about neighborhood councils and traffic safety.
Yep. So one of the highest priorities I've had, the previous administration had tried to make cuts, taking our revenue from traffic calming, safe streets, and try to divert that into general fund policing. And I've been a defender of that to make sure that we're investing in our neighborhoods, investing in infrastructure projects. We're the most important things that have been proven to slow down traffic to make the experience better. We have an ambitious goal that's adopted by council of 27 miles of interconnected pedestrian and biking infrastructure throughout our city that improves crossings at busy intersections. In my district, that would be along Maple and Monroe across the north. And I have advocated for changes in Indian Trail. We had two traffic fatalities in two years, and we implemented, after two years of arguing and fighting with the Streets Department, we implemented a new Hawk Light, one of those overhead lights that made it safer to cross to the yokes. So this has been a top priority of mine. We're making big improvements on it, and now we need to expand our cameras so that we have more funding so that we can get more projects into our neighborhoods.
So what we can do is we can actually bring our traffic unit from SPD down from four traffic officers up to 12. What helps with speeding in our neighborhoods is actually a police officer. They help keep speeding down better than a camera and better than the rapid flashing beacons that are put in our neighborhoods. We need to make sure that we're putting more of these traffic cops on the streets to make sure that we are actually making sure people aren't speeding through neighborhoods, causing danger to our children, and making sure that people are getting home safely. I'm glad that he brought up the asphalt art as well as the RFI-B beacons because, actually, I would like to bring up something that's in my own neighborhood. We actually had, as a neighborhood council, petitioned the city council to make sure that we wanted to get an RFI-B beacon down by yokes because that was where a lot of fatalities were happening. We had a lot of conversations with our city council members, and what they did is they didn't follow the, our city councils, our neighborhood councils. What they did is they put it on a street that we did not want it there. We told them that we wanted on Wiley, and they put it on Holyoke. Now, that doesn't make sense, and we have to ask ourselves, why are they asking for us to give them opinions when they aren't following what the voice of the people is? We need to make sure that we are following the voice of the people when they say they are giving us their concerns because we need to follow that and take it up to the city council and not do our own personal agendas, but what the people want because the people know their neighborhoods better than we do, especially the ones who are living in those neighborhoods. So we need more rapid flashing beacons, but in the areas that our citizens would like to and that they also request because now we're being respectful to them and not just going over what they think is, what they thought was best.
We'll go to District One next, and don't worry, on the next round, we'll change the order.
Wait, no, we're going to District, we're working our way back to District One. So we're going to start with Chris and keep you in the hot seat.
They have not answered my question yet.
Oh, sorry.
So on the next round, we'll change up the order, so we'll go the other way. But for now, we're still in the same order. I will repeat the question for everybody in the room. How should the city improve pedestrian safety and address speeding and other dangerous driving behaviors? And we'll go to you, Jonathan.
Yeah, so in the Northeast, seven of the 10 most dangerous intersections are in the Northeast. Hamilton in Nevada is a mess. Division is a mess when it comes to speeding and dangerous intersections. And one of the things that we do need to keep doing, and this is actually where I'll give some kudos to Councilmember Zepone, but Councilmember Zepone, I think, has done a really good job on making sure that we have the ability to have cameras and things like that in the city. He's done some really good work on that on behalf of the city. And those are things that we do need to be implementing here. You know, I talk to my neighborhoods regularly, and you know, while I'm not a huge fan of more cameras, you know, in the, in the public spaces, you know, that's what my people are asking for because it's dangerous to walk and bike and drive in the city of Spokane. So I support doing all that. I do wish that the projects that were coming out were a little bit more impactful. I have seen a number of the projects that are, that are happening in here, just like we were just trying to get projects out, and they ended up not working as well as we hoped they could. But, and then on top of that, we really do need to be investing more in our officers, specifically in a traffic unit because the thing that I hear most when I'm talking to my neighborhoods about traffic calming is, can we get the drag racing under control? If you live anywhere near a main street, you are hearing just cruising, just flying past you, you know, as you're going to sleep, as you're, as you're trying to just live your life. And so that is something that we really need to invest in, making sure that people are, we are curbing that behavior.
I'm really glad this question came up. As an avid biker and someone who loves to use multiple modes of transportation, it's huge. Myself and my partner just biked over for this event tonight, and we know that when we go home, it's really dark. You know, lighting is a huge reason that people are also feeling unsafe when it comes to traffic safety. But we also know there's a lot of examples in other places of where you can implement different projects to make it more safe. So we have adopted Vision Zero, but making sure that we actually implement those policies is really important because we know there's an example from Hoboken, New Jersey, and they've had zero traffic fatalities. And according to Range's amazing reporting, as Bingle said, a lot of the traffic fatalities and the deadly intersections are in District One. So making sure we are widening sidewalks, making sure we're lowering speed limits, all of those things are really effective. And also doing things like daylighting. And even in Seattle recently, they did a project where all they did was lower the speed limit to 25 miles per hour and put more frequent intervals to put the signs with no extra enforcement, and they saw real progress through that. So I think looking at other cities and learning from what they've done is really important because no one should be dying because of traffic fatalities.
So there's, there's a lot of nuance in District Two as far as neighborhood and what they care about. And one of the things that I've noticed is on South Grand, we have the Hawk Lights that actually help pedestrians, and there's some neighborhoods that have asked for that. I know on Walnut, on Cedar and Walnut, Cliff Canyon neighborhood has asked for something similar to that because we have firsthand experience of how that improved the pedestrian walkway there from Manita Park. Another thing that I've talked about that we could pilot here, and actually I heard it at Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council meeting, is noise monitoring because there's a lot of vehicles that are, have loud mufflers, and they're, and they're going super fast through some of the arterials. And so having a way to monitor that and have traffic enforcement would be important. That way, we can, you know, make people feel, or have people feel safe in their neighborhoods. One of the things that I also hear from, from some of the neighbors is bike lanes and also public transportation. So I would like to, if I'm elected to city council, be on the STA board because I think there is some neighborhoods that are underserved when it comes to public transportation, and I think that's something that I want to champion as well.
Yeah, I think this is a really important issue. We've had a number of very tragic deaths in our community that have only highlighted this need. I want to shout out to people already doing this work. We're currently in the week without driving, which I think is really important for everyone to know about. The more people who start using alternative modes of transportation, the more bikers, the more walkers, the more runners, the more of everyone we have on the streets except cars, the safer we will be. So we need to make it much easier for people to feel safe on a bike. That's why I support the 27 by 27, which is, project, which is 27 miles of bike lanes by 2027. This is so important for everyone in our community, and what some of these 27 miles are trying to do is connect current trails with new trails. And so Grandview Thorpe neighbors, just last week, were talking at a neighborhood council about how they could potentially ride from their neighborhood all the way to Coeur d'Alene. That is phenomenal, and we need to do more of that. We also need Hawk Lights. We need more, we need to address distracted driving with more traffic cops. The cameras are working. I know, I got a ticket. And I just really think that we, as long as we keep going on this, we can, we can address it and we can get people to go where they need to go without fearing for their lives.
Okay, great. This is the question I got a little over excited to ask. We're going to start with you, Chris. Spokane's eviction rate is at an all-time high despite better vacancy rates and enhanced renter protections. What, if anything, should the city do to keep renters in their homes?
So with the city being in a $13 million deficit right now, there is not much that we could probably do currently because we are going to be trying to look at trying not to cut services like our garbage, our utilities, as well as other city services. So to be frank, it's just probably not going to be a huge priority because we are just not going to have the funding for it. So I don't want to make any false promises, or I don't want to tell anyone what that I think could happen when it won't happen. In reality, there's probably not much that's going to be coming down the pike in regards to protecting our renters, even though we need to do that. There will probably be other organizations that they can look out to, but for the city's function right now, they probably won't be able to help out.
Yep. Well, that's disappointing to hear that my opponent doesn't think that there's anything the city can do. I'm actually working on an ordinance right now that I plan on introducing that doesn't cost the city any money to help renters because we know that one of the things that leads to homelessness is when people aren't unable to afford housing. And so when people are unable to afford housing, they miss out on the payments, they end up living in their streets, doubling up houses. So we need to do what we can to protect renters and homeowners across the board. The ordinance I'm looking at introducing is called algorithmic price fixing. And so we're seeing a rise of big tech companies that are trying to monopolize the market by selling products to landlords where they would set the prices of rent and jack those prices up because everyone knows through the algorithm what the prices are at. This is a simple protection that we can do that doesn't cost taxpayers any money and prevents landlords and these big tech companies from dominating a market and manipulating a market. It's also one of the things that is supported largely by mom-and-pop renters, our landlords. They're not the ones that are using this. This is the big companies, the big landlords. These are the ones that are taking advantage of people, and that's having impacts in our community today. And so I'll keep fighting for working and middle-class families because I understand the challenges that we have and look for creative solutions, talk and do the research so that we can have pragmatic solutions to help everyone in our community.
Yes, I would be in support of that ordinance. We need to protect our renters. As we know, keeping people housed is the first line of defense against our crisis that we're seeing on the streets right now. I am supportive of any sort of eviction protection measures we can address at the city. As far as rent control, I supported what was recently passed at the state level for rent control, and most landlords really are trying to do the right thing, I believe, but there are some predatory practices that we need to call out. And for example, at the climate debate last night, which my opponent wasn't able to go to, unfortunately, because I think it's very important, I was talking a little bit about how, right now, people who rent have no incentive to improve their installation because they don't own the place, and yet they're paying astronomical bills because the landlords aren't paying their bills, so they have no reason to work on getting efficient heating and cooling. We need to start thinking about these incentives because some of these corporations are huge and can't afford to make improvements so that people living paycheck to paycheck do not find themselves on the streets.
So yeah, I agree at a state level, we've, we've done some rent and control, and I think for me, from my perspective, of one of the things that I see that we're missing here in Spokane is the single-family homes. And so I want to advocate, and I've been working with developers and people that are part of the community, for example, Jim Frank, who developed Kendall Yard. I think we've done a good job building apartment units, but one thing that we're missing here in Spokane is the single-family homes on smaller lots, smaller homes so that actually people can live and work here in Spokane and actually lay their roots in Spokane. When it comes to housing, I think to protect renters or protect people is be able to build more housing, and I think that's one initiative that I want to work on is streamline permitting, rezoning for smaller lots, smaller house, smaller homes. In that way, we can create a supply that people can take advantage of.
So I think when it comes to eviction rates, there are a lot of things that I think council is on the right track about. So I think when it comes to rent stabilization, we are really leading the state in that regard, and I think that's amazing. I also think when it comes to the different zoning that we've implemented, where single-family lots can be turned into duplexes, quadplexes, all those things, amazing. So I think those are really great examples of how the city is trying to already approach the issue. But we also know that a lot of people do get evicted over small amounts of money that they haven't been able to pay. Someone shouldn't be evicted for like 200 bucks, right? And so I think, like Kate said, we should be focusing on keeping people in their homes, making sure we're focusing on prevention and stabilization as much as we can. And I think when it comes to, okay, yeah, zoning, love upzoning and making sure that we're building up, not out, because we know sprawl contributes to climate crisis, and people are then having to pay to travel further, like Bingle said, when it comes to gas prices. So we need to make sure people are able to get all the things that they need in the places they live so that we are creating transit-oriented developments. We have mixed-use locations. We have people with middle housing. We're fixing our condo liability laws. We can do so much to make sure more housing can be built here so it's more affordable.
Yeah, first off, I want to thank my opponent for praising a lot of the work that I've done on council. You know, I was the one who led the charge on removing height limits here in the city of Spokane to where we could build up and we didn't need to build out. You know, I've partnered with many members of council to make sure that we are rezoning because zoning actually has a pretty nefarious history, and I think that there is a real justice component to making sure that, that we're not zoning people out of certain sections of the city. And so I appreciate the praise there from my opponent. There are some other things that we can do here in the city, but things that we should not be pursuing, I do not believe we should be pursuing rent control or rental stabilization. And the reason why is because you can look at the studies, the Stanford study, for example, that was just done a few years ago. There is a temporary benefit that happens, but long-term, it does damage the housing stock in your area, and it does damage to the rental stock in the area. And so while it gives a temporary boost, and that's what people who are typically in these positions, because we can only be on council for eight years, right? You know, you're in a position for a temporary time. You're looking for a temporary boost, something that's sexy, something that gets you a win, but in the long-term does damage to the community. I think we need to be thinking far more long-term to make sure that we have a healthy stock, not just for us, but also for our kids and their kids as they're coming after us. There are programs at the city that, that help folks who are in that right-on-the-edge space. We have a lot of rapid rehousing programs that I have supported and continued to support, and hopefully we can do as much as we can to keep people in their homes because it's best for everybody when they're not kicked out of their homes.
All right, thanks, everybody, for following the time so well so far. For this question, we are going to start with Kate in District Two. As private groups are bringing together people from the city and county to talk about how to address behavioral health and criminal justice needs, potentially with the idea of bringing another public safety tax proposal to voters next year, how do you think the city should change its investments in those areas?
I am very passionate about this subject, so I'm happy to go first. I just met with the lead provider for the CHAZ Medical Street Team, and I think one of the most important things we need to do when addressing our public safety needs are talk to people on the streets, talk to the people who are doing the work. And one of the things that he said was, we need more people doing work like the BHU, the Behavioral Health Unit in the Fire Department. So I would prioritize making sure that we are committed to talk, to using social workers and people with lived experiences to go out onto the streets, meet people where they're at. Because I went on a ride-along, and I have to tell you, for three hours, we tried to get somebody into services, and the police officer, as affable as he may be, could not change the fact that he was in uniform and had a gun on his hip. And so there is a lack of trust because of the lived experiences these people have had. And so we need to acknowledge that, and we need to put our, put our best foot forward. And we're not doing that currently, and the more we have social workers being the first line of defense, the first people that come to, that are offering services, the better.
The question again is, as private groups are bringing together people from the city and county to talk about how to address behavioral health and criminal justice needs, potentially with the idea of bringing in potentially with the idea of bringing another public safety tax proposal to voters, how do you think the city should change its investments in those areas?"
I would say that from my perspective, one of the things that we failed to do is being able to work together. I think we need to make sure that our county commissioners and our city administration, city councils, all working together. I think when I talk to people on the doors, what they mentioned to me is, you know, they're willing to look at new taxes, but they want clarity, they want transparency on where this money is being used and how we're using it. Because, you know, we see it firsthand that, you know, we've done, our point-in-count has gone down, but when it comes to on-street-level homelessness, it's actually grown about thirty-eight percent. So there's something that we haven't been able to address when it comes to the people on the streets that are chronic homelessness, whether have mental health or drug addiction services or need drug addiction services. So it first comes from a collaborative approach where we have everybody on the table, whether it's mental health providers, community organizers, the county commissioners, our city administration, everybody working together to find the solutions. And so transparency and communication is clear that people are willing to support a tax incentive, but we have to show them what our plan is, how we're gonna deal with these things. Because we have to treat this as a business, right? We have to look at where this money is going to and how we're actually gonna improve the people that are most vulnerable on our streets, but also the communities and neighborhoods that are affected by it.
Can I do a rebuttal, please?
Yes.
Remind me, remind me my time limit?
One minute.
One minute, okay.
I'll give you thirty seconds and ten seconds.
Perfect. I wanna say that I think my opponent is forgetting a really amazing piece of news that just came out yesterday about the regional task force. We are actually collaborating and I have been talking with County Commissioner Chris Jordan about this for a few months now. The city, the county, the valley, lots of different nonprofits, lots of people with lived experience, lots of people in police and in fire are working together to address this problem regionally. I am a huge advocate of addressing this regionally. These issues do not stop at the end of our city borders. So I do think that's important, but I do wanna say I think some collaboration is happening. And if I was elected, I would really like to continue that process. And then also, my opponent said that there has been an increase of thirty-nine percent in homeless people. At the point in time, it was nine hundred and fifty-five for two thousand and twenty-three. This time, this year was six hundred and seventeen. It's actually reduced thirty-five percent in the last two years.
That's your time.
Could you also repeat the question for me?
And now that it has come up, I can mention, we did write these questions before the official task force name came out. I think it's called the Safe and Healthy Spokane Task Force. They had their first meeting today. Again, this is a private group-led effort, bringing together people from the city and county to talk about how to address behavioral health and criminal justice needs, potentially with the idea of bringing another public safety tax proposal to voters next year. How do you think the city should change its investments in those areas?
I think what the city should be doing is investing in proven, data-backed solutions. So we know things like community courts are effective. We know that being able to divert people from incarceration is positive and it actually helps with people then interacting with law enforcement again. We have a lot of people who are in our jail that are just awaiting trial and that is a lot of beds that are being taken up. For folks who were arrested during the June eleventh protest, they all described what they saw in the jail and they were all horrified. And so I think we also need to make sure the treatment of folks in our county jail is also humane. So there needs to be a conversation about how the investment is already happening because we're spending a lot of money for people to be treated this way. And so making sure that instead of, you know, introducing a new levy that would then be a bigger jail or something else of that kind, making sure we are using the resources that we already have, the systems we already have, and making them much better at responding to these crises. And listening to facts and data, like Kate said, you know, we know behavioral health units, CARES team, people who are meeting people where they're at, instead of dispersing people into neighborhoods, is really important. And expecting people to know exactly where resources are is a big burden, especially when they're just trying to find a place to sleep at night.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of regional collaboration. I spent two years of my time on the city council, working with former President Brian Beggs, now Judge Beggs. And Brian and I had a really great relationship moving forward on this, which was, we basically put all of this stuff down on homelessness. It was, what we're gonna do is we can hammer each other on everything, but on this one particular issue, we have to be united. And that did us a real solid. Unfortunately, when Mayor Brown got elected, that plan died immediately. And so regional collaboration, I think we need to define what it means oftentimes because sometimes people say, "Hey, we want to collaborate," and then they'll introduce an ordinance that you haven't seen, but they've already done a press conference about. I don't know how much collaboration that is. But to the June eleventh protesters, I would say, "Don't obstruct federal law enforcement, then you won't go to jail." Do we need a new jail? Absolutely, we need a new jail. It's not a question at all because currently, right now, we have a lot of people in the jail who would be much better served in a different environment, one that is actually built to address the issues that they have, right? We have eighteen hundred people on the streets right now in our point-in-time count and almost half of them have serious substance use or mental health disorders. And we're not adequately addressing those and we don't have the facilities to do so. So as this task force goes forward, there needs to be a new jail, but there also needs to be serious money that comes forward for us to fund facilities that are going to serve the people how they need to be served and it's gonna do everybody in the community right. So I'm gonna mirror a little bit what Jonathan Bingle just said. We need to reinvest and invest more in a new, modern jail that has updated services, not only for our people who are working there, but for the people who are being booked there. There is a lot of things that we need to do with our jail that is, it needs to be updated. It has been a long time since we need to do that. We need a lot more beds, we need to have wraparound services that address our mental health, addiction, and have onsite job training because that is one of the things that we need to be coinciding with one another to make sure that we're not just throwing the book at these people and throwing away the key, but we're actually rehabilitating them, getting them back to society and making sure that they're contributing part, members of our society. One other thing that we need to do and we need to look into is what can we do further? What we can do further is we need to make sure that we're having regional collaboration with our municipal partners across Spokane. Now, what that means is we need to look back into having a regional collaborative for homelessness that was torpedoed by Mayor Lisa Brown when she got into office. That was gonna cut down on all of our redundancies, making sure that the nonprofits and the charities that were working, trying to solve this homelessness crisis, weren't going in nine different directions, but going under one consolidated banner, making sure that we are consolidating our resources and using them in the most efficient way possible. So that's what I would do, is reinvest more in a new, modern jail, as well as looking to another regional collaborative that will help us cut down on our redundancies so we're not wasting taxpayers' monies and resources.
Yep. Oh, yeah, it's, okay. I've been very supportive of regional collaborations and efforts. I actually went to some of the meetings that were happening over the last two years previously and have spoken in support of efforts around modernizing the criminal justice system and the task force that was established. So I'm glad my opponent is supporting the efforts that I've been working on. I think we can all agree, though, that our criminal justice system has some serious flaws and things that aren't working in it. And we want a system that doesn't just warehouse people in cells, but we wanna rehabilitate people and get them resources and accountability at the same time. I'm a teacher and in my classroom, I'm not just about disciplining people. I'm about trying to help them grow and become better, better students and better citizens in our community. That's something that we want our criminal justice system to do, too. And so investments that we'd have in our criminal justice system would involve those wraparound services, those connections that we don't currently have in our jail. It would also look at mental health and behavioral health, that's in sobering beds and detox centers. We don't have enough of those for people to get detoxed and stabilized. And finally, I've been supportive of looking into creating a street outreach team, a dedicated department within the city that does specific street outreach to people. We have some of that happening, co-deployed teams, but still tying up with the resources of our police officers. Other cities have made that switch and they've seen that a reduction in the amount of time that the police officers have responded, an increase of social workers and support services who help connect those people to services and get them stabilized while saving us money and having police respond to crimes, which is what they're best at.
All right, we're moving on to our district-specific questions. So we're gonna start with District One. Same rules, ninety seconds for each of you to respond. We'll have Sarah start on this. What does a safe and thriving downtown look like to you? And what is your current perception of the real state of downtown?
I love this question. I love downtown. We're in downtown right now and I love this library and I think it's a really great testament of our library system, which is an aside. But I, there's a lot of misconceptions about downtown and a lot of fear-mongering, I think. And definitely when it comes to people's lived experiences, we can address that while also not demonizing communities and having an us versus them because that's not helpful to anyone. And so when it comes to our small businesses that are here locally downtown, we're actually seeing an increase of those, which is opposed to what some other folks have been saying in their talking points. And folks, really, when they've described why they've struggled downtown, it comes down to the cost of goods. So what we're seeing with tariffs, tariffs because of Trump, and also the cost for their leases. So they're not mentioning some of the other things that are often used as talking points when it comes to downtown. And I think additionally, our downtown is somewhere that thrives based on people visiting it. So if we're constantly telling people, "It's dangerous, it's a war zone," no one's gonna go downtown, right? And that's a self-fulfilling prophecy for people to say that and then people would not go to the businesses and then it's a cycle. So I think as a city, we should be encouraging people to visit downtown and describe how amazing it is. And I actually, if you agree with me and you love downtown, I have buttons that say, "I love downtown Spokane."
Yeah, as a current representative of downtown, I'll tell you, we're not telling people it's dangerous. They're telling us it's dangerous, okay? And there's a massive difference. So when we have the PNQ that comes in and people break into their cars and steal the entire, all of the jackets from the, from the girls and they take them and go away. Or you have, you know, Post Street shut down and people are breaking windows at Ben Joyce. Or I hear about things that are happening at Frank Steiner and, you know, employees having to deal with, you know, with dangerous situations. We're not telling people it's dangerous, they're telling us, okay? And all you have to do is walk around with some eyes and you'll see that there is unsafe elements of downtown. That doesn't mean that downtown's not also great and not have a bright future. I was meeting with some people today who were wanting to invest millions of dollars in downtown. And I was telling them, "Yes, we got some problems right now, but I'm telling you, Spokane is on the up, right? And here's why you should invest in downtown Spokane." You can hold multiple things intention. You can say downtown is great and downtown is awesome and there's so much opportunity downtown and that's one hundred percent true. But you can also say, with that, it is also dangerous and many people will not come downtown because they don't feel safe. And you don't change the perception first. What you do is you change the reality, the perception will follow because those are two different things. If Spokane is safe, it will appear safe, okay? It can appear safe but not be safe, but if it is safe, it will appear safe. Let's make it safe first and then people will want to come downtown again.
All right, Jonathan, we're gonna start with you this time. Our next question, District One has the lowest voter turnout of all the city's districts. How would you engage with politically disconnected individuals like college students, like myself, or maybe families who might not have time to go to city council meetings?
Totally. So this has been a focus of mine for the last four years because we do have the lowest voter turnout. And I think there's a small element of, why should I even lift my voice if I get neglected? And as a lifelong resident of District One, as a Rogers graduate, I can tell you that for a long time, District One has been neglected. And I think when we're talking about lived experience, I think you need to have lived through the district struggles to understand exactly what it's like to go to City Hall and say, "We demand our respect. We're not the little brother, we're not the whatever. We will get absolutely what we deserve." And that's sort of the thing that I'm trying to get us to do is understand that your voice does matter and votes matter. And if you wanna be something where more people are showing up and coming to your space, you know, the mayor or anybody else, is, you know, you become a voting block that is pretty significant and all of a sudden, now they gotta start coming, winning our votes. And so we've been working with a lot of our neighborhoods. We have, we have some tough neighborhood turnout with some of them. I helped connect a few of them to where we could actually have a more thriving neighborhood group experience. But it does just come down to, how can we reach out to those people? How can we spend time in these spaces so that we can be there? And, you know, that's something I've done for my last four years and some might say that I'm distant and inaccessible, but I would say those people have also never picked up a phone and called me before. And so for those who live in my district and call me or see me at neighborhood councils, I think they'll tell you that I'm quite good at representing them.
It's a huge issue, the fact that we have the lowest voter registration and the lowest voter turnout. And I think part of it is because people are not talking to people, right? As my opponent said, people aren't calling him, but I think the expectation is that people who are elected should be in community with people and it shouldn't be the expectation that they have to take time out of their day, to call the elected official. So when it comes to earning their vote, it is something you have to earn. It's not just something you can expect just because you've lived there or have lived there your whole life. That doesn't show them that you're going to stand up and fight for them. And so for me, it's really been important knocking on doors, talking to people. And for a lot of people, they have said, "I don't even know who represents me now. I never see them, they are inaccessible." And so I think it's important to make sure that we are, if I am elected, right? We are in community with people because you have to be a trusted messenger. They're not just gonna see, you know, council member by your name and assume you're someone they can trust. They need to know that you are there for them and you know the struggles that they're experiencing. And so whether that is hanging out at a community coffee shop, like I've done and had little town halls, or whether that's tabling at little neighborhood council meetings or at the creative district and Gonzaga's climate forum yesterday that my opponent was not at. A lot of college students were there talking to me about how they can get involved because they didn't even know they could vote. So it's really important to do that education, too.
All right, District Two. Kate, we're gonna start with you. And over the last year, we've seen multiple large developments planned in the Leita-Hangman Valley with considerable neighborhood and community pushback. The city will also update its comprehensive plan in 2026. So how should the city approach growth in District Two as the region continues to face a housing shortage? And would you support continued moratoriums on development in your district? If so, under what conditions?
It's a huge issue. Member, most of the residents of Leita Valley-Hangman, Grandview-Thorp, Eagle Ridge, West Hills, they're all feeling like no one's listening to them. We are allowing development after development after development. And when we're in the process of contracting with these developers, we are not adequately asking for infrastructure that will protect our residents. And I do know that the city has been worried for a long time about developers suing for another moratorium, if another moratorium was placed. My opponent actually works for a developer, so this is very much part of the issues that we see here and the power struggles we see in Spokane. But I think we need to stop and really think about the liability that the city might be taking on if we allow development after development after development in places with increased wildfire that do not have adequate roads. I was an active volunteer at the Grandview-Thorp wildfire evacuation and I saw for myself the cars that are lining up. I've been on tours of Eagle Ridge where residents have said, "That's not a road, but if in a fire, we're just gonna, all the neighbors have agreed, we're just gonna barrel down there." That's not okay and we need to do better by our residents.
I agree. It is definitely a big issue. I think from what I know, talking to neighbors and talking to people, is we had an eighteen-month moratorium to address these issues, right? Whether it was infrastructure, roads, and in the eighteen months, the neighbors do not feel that any of those issues were actually addressed. And so, you know, to have a moratorium, I would completely support a new moratorium if you have milestones and goals that our city council can do and communicate with the neighbors on what's actually gonna be done as far as infrastructure or roads or what the plan is. But just to kick the can down the road and leave the issues for somebody else to deal with, I don't agree with that. And so one of the things that a lot of the neighbors say is, we need a clear and transparent communication of what's happening, right? And we do want infrastructure, we do need new roads, but we have to look at this a more comprehensive plan as far as, instead of looking at project by project specific, is we need to look at neighborhoods and develop a plan that says, "Here's how we're going to tackle this" and partner with the developers and then build the infrastructure while- and then build the infrastructure while we're building the housing. But yes, I would be in support of a moratorium if we have clear direction and milestones that we can follow in city council and give people the communication that they want and desire.
Great. We're gonna stick with you for the next question. As some local leaders are pushing for involuntary institutionalization for homeless people, at the same time as the Trump administration is also promoting that policy, do you support mandatory substance abuse or behavioral health treatment for people who refuse voluntary treatment?
I think one of the things that we failed to do is get people connected and giving them a guiding hand. I think that on-street level homelessness or chronic homelessness, you know, people are dealing with mental health and drug addiction issues. And I think the way that I look at this is if it was my son or daughter, I would do everything in my hands to get them off the street and into the services that they need to get better. And I think it's really hard for us to expect some of these people to make decisions for themselves when they're under the influence of fentanyl or they don't have the medication that they need for the mental health disorders. And so I think there is proven models out there that showed that, you know, when people do not take voluntary services or reject shelter, mental health, or drug addiction services, that they either get mandatory rehabilitation or jail. And nine out of 10 will pick mandatory rehabilitation. And this is, the city of San Jose is doing this in California, and I think they've only done it for about two years. But they have a very success rate of, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's about 65% to 70% success rate of those peoples getting the resources that they need and get better. And so I think that if people are harmed to themselves or others, we should be able to give them a guiding hand and get them the resources that they need.
In law school, I actually sat in on multiple involuntary hearings based on someone's mental capacitation. The law here is very clear. If you are a severe risk to yourself or to others, that is when something like institutional involuntary proceedings can happen. It cannot happen any other way. We live with a constitution that guarantees certain personal freedoms. If you are not breaking the law, and most of the time, these police officers cannot prove that someone has broken the law. They can tell that maybe they're under the influence of drugs, but they haven't seen anyone take drugs, which means, as a prosecutor, I know, you can't prosecute that. So we need to actually think about things. Like I was saying before, we need to talk, we need to engage people through social services and through mental health workers and the firefighter department with the behavioral health unit. We need to meet people there, because constitutionally speaking, we don't have the ability, even if we wanted to, to take somebody's freedoms away without breaking a crime or without being extremely a danger to themself or to others. Obviously, if someone is stepping out in front of our traffic, we have, stepping out in front of traffic, someone's overdosing three times in a day. Those are classic cases where we need and can have mental incapacitation. Thank you. Hearings.
Perfect. And we're gonna move to you folks. Chris, we're gonna start with you first. The city has passed non-binding resolutions in the past supporting immigrants and the LGBTQ+ community that don't require action or really materially add protections for these minority groups. Do you think the city should support groups that are facing outsized attacks today, including the LGBTQ community, immigrants, and refugees? And if so, how? If not, why not?
So what the city can do to make sure that we're protecting those communities is pretty much doing what they're doing right now. Again, we are using non-binding resolutions, which don't really have much power or punch. They're not laws that we put into actual inaction. So we can't really do much on that, and I know I've said that before with others. But regarding those kind of communities, we need to make sure that we are protecting them, but in the right way, so we're not giving them a false sense of security. So for instance, the non-binding resolution that was done a while ago that was put about for public right of ways for officers not coming in, even Chief Hall said, "We have no enforcement capability here." So we need to make sure that we are looking into our laws and our resolutions to make sure that they are not giving this false impression that we're actually doing something when there's nothing that we can do.
So as a council member, I've passed legislation that created our city motto that says, "In Spokane, we all belong." And it's a fundamental belief of mine in my classroom, in my life, that we all belong and to make an environment where people feel included and safe. Unfortunately, my opponent has not done that. At a church forum earlier this year, he said that I should be fired from this job because I'm fighting for LGBTQ rights and the rights of small populations. I tried to call him. We've known each other since we were 12 years old. We're friends from childhood. I tried to call him and talk to him about that, and he didn't take my call. Instead, he texted me and said, "I'm busy campaigning. See you on the campaign trail." So this is the only time I get to see him. And those are not the values that I believe in, that I don't believe our community believes in. And so I've been proud to sponsor and support ordinances and resolutions that defend the rights of all people in our community, not just those who don't have to worry about being small populations. It is something that I live with as a person, an LGBT person every day, of the threats in our community. So we need to stand with our immigrant community, our LGBTQ community, and all communities in our, all people in our community, whether it's impacted by us or not. My opponent on Facebook has said that he opposes those resolutions that we've passed. And I will stand and support our immigrant communities and others and look for ways that we can support them beyond just resolutions and ordinances, too.
So just to set the record straight, what I said at Calvary Chapel was nothing to do with having him lose his job or being fired. That is 100% not true. What I was commenting on is the lack of fiscal responsibility when it comes to what's going on with the budget. That's why we're in a $13 million deficit. I was commenting on how they were going to change the bathrooms to transgender bathrooms and/or different kind of bathrooms. What that is going to do is it's gonna cost us $300,000 the first year, $400,000 the next year, and $500,000 the coinciding years. So out of all that, I was critiquing on the bathroom situation and how it reflects on our fiscal responsibility for a budget. I have never said that he should be fired from his job.
I'll rebuttal. Just for you. Yeah, I think it's important to set the record straight here. Some of the things that he just said aren't true. It was publicly reported in the Spokesman Review. The city does not fund transgender bathrooms. That's not a thing. They're just called bathrooms. They're single-stall, single-use bathrooms. And so this type of language of blaming a group of people for a budget problem is exactly what the Trump administration does, is try to divide our community by picking groups of people to divide us instead of talking about the bigger problems, which is that they're providing tax cuts to the wealthiest in our community, taking away Medicaid, taking away healthcare from people in our community, while we have to sit and talk about these different various issues to divide us. And that's not the enemy here. We in Spokane are a place where we all belong. And we need to stand together and fight with, fight together to help support working and middle-class families, because that's who I represent, and that's who I've been supported by workers and will continue to fight for their rights.
Great. You survived round one. Congratulations. Oh, we have one more question? Oh, we do. Oh, my gosh. I keep jumping down the list. My bad.
I get to ask all the housing questions. This is also for District Three, and Zach, we're gonna start with you. District Three, commonly touted as having some of the most innovative developments, mostly Kendall Yards. So what kind of development do you want to see prioritized in the rest of your district, and where?
Yeah, I think it's really important that we are addressing the biggest issue in our community, which is affordability in housing. And so as your council member, I've been proud to sponsor and support legislation that makes it easier to build housing throughout our city. And we are prioritizing the infill development in our community. That's from eliminating barriers to housing. I've actually partnered with Councilmember Bingle on multiple ordinances to eliminate barriers to housing, working in a bipartisan fashion to do that with eliminating parking minimum requirements, eliminating zoning restrictions that only allowed single-family housing in certain parts of our neighborhoods. And so I want to invest in our community and build in the most dense areas and build our city up. My opponent wants to pull back a lot of those regulations that led us into the housing crisis in the first place. He wants to reinstitute mandatory single-family zoning that constricts our environment. He wants to expand our, annexing more land and building out. That costs people more, because we have to build more towers and pump stations and sewers. That all gets passed on to the ratepayers as increases in your utility rates. So I want to invest in those things. I want to invest in transit and make it a vibrant community where we have options to get around in our environment. And that's the type of environment or city that people are wanting to live in, a vibrant community where everyone has opportunities to thrive.
So what we need to do is doing more of what Kendall Yards did. We need to have multi-diverse developments that are helping have a huge housing option choice for our people here in Spokane, because that is what people want, is they want housing choices here in Spokane to make sure that they are making the right choice for themselves. And they also want, what everyone does want is the American dream, which is that means they want a white picket fence, a yard, and a modest-sized house. We need to make sure that we are expanding our urban growth area and making sure that we actually can work within our comprehensive plan, where we have 10 areas that we can actually start doing this development, because we also have surplus land up in the Five Mile area that I've identified that we can actually start with this. We can work with community leaders like Jim Frank and to bring back regulations to make sure that we can make another Kendall Yards. Wouldn't that be great if we had another Kendall Yards up north? Everyone loves coming down to Kendall Yards. They have a lot of housing choices. They have a small commercial district. We really need to make sure that we are working with our community leaders like Jim Frank to make more opportunities like Kendall Yards a possibility, because it creates more housing choices and options that will bring down the price and that will actually satiate demand in a free-market style. So yes, I want to bring back regulations so we can help our community leaders like Jim Frank or experts in housing so that we can help them out, make sure that we're having good developments that are going to create more opportunities for our citizens here in Spokane.
Okay. I was really excited to give you guys my job, because we're moving on to round two, where you get to ask each other questions. First, we're gonna go over where you stand on rebuttals. So Councilmember Bingle, Councilmember Zepone, Chris, and Kate, you each have one rebuttal left. Sarah and Alejandro, you both have two. All right. We are going to start on this side again. I know you've been talking, but last round, we started over here, so we've gotta kind of keep it fair. For those of you in the audience, each candidate has been told to prep a question for their opponent. Their opponent then has two minutes to answer. For those of you who have rebuttals, you can use them in this section. They do get shorter. So your rebuttal for this section, if you choose to use it, is 30 seconds. And I would advise that you choose to use it, because the next section is pretty rapid-fire. And I don't anticipate rebuttals being, you know, you get one sentence on rebuttal. So you can save them up. I wouldn't personally. All right. Chris Savage, do you have a question for Councilmembers Zepone?
Yes.
All righty.
So if you're elected to city council for another term, will you commit to that city council term and not seek higher office or any other elected official position?
Yep, I've been committed to our community all my life and plan to commit to our community for the rest of my life. I grew up here, born and raised, went to North Central High School, the same school that my grandpa went to. I'm now a teacher there. And I went away to college and didn't choose elite colleges, Georgetown and Princeton. And I chose to come back to Spokane to serve our community. My peers went off to work for Wall Street and Capitol Hill and take lucrative jobs. I wanted to serve our community. And so as a teacher in a low-income school, I've been dedicated to creating after-school programs and opportunities for our youth. I then had the opportunity to run for city council and represent my hometown, my district, where I grew up, where I live and work. And so I've had this incredible opportunity in fighting for working, middle-class people like me who have grown up here. And so I plan on doing that. I can't predict what opportunities will come in the future. Don't know what's gonna happen every day. So I can't predict exactly what's gonna happen long-term, but I do know that I'm gonna be dedicated to serving our community, just as I have been my entire life.
Yeah, sure.
So at Hot Ones debate that was put on by Range Media, he was asked the same question, and he would not say that he would commit to it. As you just saw right now, he said that he would not fully commit to it, that he doesn't know what opportunities may come up and actually present themselves. That sounds like to me that he is not committing to actual another four years, because if there's an opportunity that presents itself that's better, it sounds like he's going to take it. For me, I'm going to commit to you all for four years, and I won't be seeking any other office. I will be committed to my district. I'll be committed to you to make sure that you have a voice up on city council.
All right. Councilmembers Zepone, do you have a question for Mr. Savage?
Yep. President Trump has been using different reasons to send in the National Guard to cities across our country. First, it started with protests in LA, then it turned into homelessness in Washington DC. And most recently, in our backyard here in Portland, he's using Antifa as a reason. So Donald Trump's looking for multiple reasons to come to our cities, and he even said he wants to use cities as a training ground. Do you support the use of the National Guard in Spokane to address our issues? Yes or no?
Yes, if it's required, because again, we don't have the federal authority to oversupersede what the president does. We are a local municipality that only has limited amount of power that we can do. So it doesn't really matter what we say yes or no. If they want to come in here and do what they want to, they will be able to do what they want to. We have no oversight over the federal authority, and we pretty much all know that who've been in civic engagement for a long time.
Are we only asking each other the one question? Is that right? All right, then I might as well use my rebuttal. Yes, I want to serve our community and have been committed to that for the rest of my life. What I just heard from my opponent is really troubling. We could potentially have an elected official who may ask for the National Guard to come in Spokane or do it. We need local officials who will stand up for our values here. And we know that the National Guard is not a good use of resources, and we don't want troops walking down our streets with guns in our community. That is not the values that I have. That's not what most people in our community want. And that is what I'm not gonna, I will actively call against and fight against.
Great. We're gonna move to District Two. Alejandro, I'm gonna ask you to go first. Do you have a question for Kate?
I do have a question. We talk about, you know, community, collaboration. I know Saxapone brought up the fact that, you know, the rhetoric that's happening. How do we expect to work and collaborate together when we're calling out developers, we're calling out these people that supposedly don't have the best interests for Spokane? I've made a point to meet with everyone that has given me the opportunity, from the Democrats, independents, to Republicans, because we need to represent everybody in our district and create a broad coalition to be able to come up with answers to help the people here in Spokane. So my question to you is, how do you plan to represent independents and more conservative constituents in your district?
Yeah. My opponent said a couple times that I do not take meetings with certain people, which is not the case. I recently attended a East Spokane Business Association meeting. I have also offered, at this point, three times to meet with all members of the Spokane Business Association. I've offered to meet them for coffee, just as my opponent has. I am not getting responses from them. I did meet with one person, and I really appreciate that Doug Trudeau was willing to meet with me and discuss his concerns, because I think we need to listen to everybody. Right now, we are very divided, and I want to, if elected, I want to try to start working on those divisions. I think there's a lot of interesting and very true facts that we can hold together that may seem like they're in opposition to one another, but may not actually be. If we could come up with policies to address, to address having a thriving downtown that everyone feels safe, and also address making sure that we have people on the streets who are getting the services they need. We can do both of this, but we have to work together, and that's going to require taking perspectives from all parts of our community. And that's something that I would actively pursue and have been trying to pursue on the campaign. Unfortunately, you can't help who won't meet with you.
So no, my point is, at the Range Media, you were pointing out Larry Stone quite a bit. And you talked about how, you know, special interests, but then again, you said, "But I need his money to be able to do some of this," which is counterproductive, because how do you, how do you think that somebody like that would like to work with you when you're attacking the person? And so to me, it's a matter of finding a common ground with somebody and being able to work with them without attacking them, because...
That's your time. I'm sorry.
All right, we're gonna move to you, Kate.
Related. You have stated that you are not planning to leave your employment with Larry Stone. For those of us who did not know who Larry Stone is, he's a prominent real estate developer and founded the Spokane Business Association, which is sort of a conservative business lobbying group in 2024. My question is, do you plan to recuse yourself from all votes where the Spokane Business Association or developers like Larry Stone are actively lobbying city council to vote in a certain way? And if not, how are you planning to address the blatant conflict of interest your employment will create?
It's an interesting question, because I don't think there's... I, it's an interesting question because I don't think there's any way for me to recuse from something. When it comes to SBA, they're not a conservative group. They're a Spokane Business Association. They represent businesses. And we need developers, we need businesses, we need community organizers, grassroots leaders, we need everybody in the community working together. So we can't label one group one way and expect them to just be like, oh no, we're not, we're gonna stay out of this. Everybody cares for the future of Spokane and everybody has a different perspective. My hope is to bring common ground in our city council and build from there. These challenges affect all of us, not just one set of group of people. And so for me is, we have to come together to the table with everybody that's here in Spokane. And so when it comes to SBA, they're gonna bring initiatives like everybody would and we just need to work the seven of us in city council and find ways to improve the lives of the people here in Spokane. Whether it's protecting our businesses downtown, I know the business, the hospitality industry has been talking about a hospitality zone downtown. This is stuff that we need to vote, seven of us, and I think we can come to consensus and bring policy that improves our businesses, improve our districts and our communities. So that's what I will do.
I'm guessing you wanna use your rebuttal?
Yes.
Great. Eliza?
First of all, you can recuse yourself. That's something that I would look into if you were elected. Shelby Lamden, the council member who's in the temporary position, works at CHAZ and just had to recuse herself when they were talking about budget items where CHAZ would benefit. This is something that we really need to discuss and it's something that unfortunately I'm just going to keep beating the drum of because it is a huge conflict of interest. The Spokane Business Association is conservative. They spend a lot of money.
Great. I think Alejandro, you still have one rebuttal, is that correct Sam? If you would like to use it.
Yeah, I would love to use it. I don't know where she was going with that. Again, they're not conservative. They're business owners. There's business owners that, here in Spokane, that some might be independents, some may be Republicans, some might be Democrats. It's about businesses that bring economy to our city. And they wanna see because they're, they're actually, they have a lot of burdens on top of being a business owner. So I think the job of our city council is to take that burden off of their...
The thirty seconds is a quicker adjustment.
It's also two minutes for the answer to the question, so it's longer at the beginning and then shorter for rebuttal.
All right, you look like you're ready with the mic up, Councilmember Bingle. So if you would like to ask your opponent a question, now you can.
Absolutely. All right. So Sarah, you are a featured speaker at a town hall that is hosted by the Communist Party of Eastern Washington in ideology whose values are completely out of touch with Spokane families. How can you possibly defend being a featured speaker at this and aligning yourself with an ideology, the most dangerous ideology, most destructive ideology of the twentieth century that openly opposes free markets, property rights, and even the very freedoms our community depends on?
Thank you for the question. For me, it's really important to hear from all folks in District One, which includes people who are part of the DSA, CPUSA, people who are Gonzaga students, Gonzaga Mutual Aid Club will be there, Mass, which does mutual aid, survival squad stuff throughout our streets that really benefit our community members, especially when it comes to just being able to care for one another. So that's really important to me, especially when an event is being hosted in the library, a public space downtown. It's free, it's public, it has free childcare, free food. I think those are all things that I would love to be able to participate in and share with people what my thoughts are, learn from them, what their thoughts are. I think our community members deserve to be heard and so, yeah.
Rebuttal. That's right. I think what I heard was communism has great community values. I think the hundreds of millions of people who died under communist dictatorships would disagree with you. And I think that there is a difference in listening to people and being featured in something, right? Like I listen to everybody who wants to come and talk to me, but if I were a featured speaker at a far right town hall, I should be run out of this town, okay? You should not be associating and openly participating and supporting extreme groups.
Can I rebut? Sick. Perfect. Yes. A, I think me being asked to do a town hall is not being endorsed by anybody. It's just me having a conversation with people. And I would say right now what we're seeing is extremism at the hands of Trump and I know you love him. So I think when it comes to what type of extremism we're seeing right now and what we're seeing really destroy our communities, it's what's happening right now with the Trump administration. And I think as a council member, that really impacts our budget, that impacts how people are, you know, supported by you, et cetera.
Great, well you get to keep the mic because it's your turn to ask Councilmember Bingle a question.
My question's a little long.
Read it fast.
Okay, I'm gonna read it so fast. Okay. District One is a beautifully diverse community and we deserve to be represented by someone who will stand with us and your public record shows that you have not. When unions and workers came to council to demand fair practices and better wages through the Community Workforce Agreement, you said, no, I won't stand with you. When queer and trans folks feared for their safety in the face of the Trump administration and asked council to protect their rights by including them in the city's Human Rights Code amongst other important protections, you said, no, I won't stand with you. When immigrant community members are being disappeared from their homes, workplaces, and schools and need a council to affirm their place here through the Safe and Welcome Ordinance or Resolution, you said, no, I won't stand with you. When our district has the highest ridership of public transit and you had the chance to support projects like the Division Bus Rapid Transit Project, you said, no, I won't stand with you and by the way, take an Uber. When healthcare providers, elderly folks, children, and immunocompromised people were at the highest risk of long-term health impacts and even death begged the public to wear masks...
Is this a question or a statement?
Yeah, give me a sec, you know? On personal note, I'll just add...
No personal note, it's ask the question.
Okay. So if all these communities that I belong to and who I work alongside of and you protested and made me feel unsafe at my workplace at Planned Parenthood, folks who are working class, LGBTQ, immigrant, transit riding, medically vulnerable renters, and countless others, how can we trust you to represent us if you won't stand with us?
Do I get commensurate time to answer this question? Because there's about seven in there.
Just one question.
Extra time anyways, it's two minutes.
Oh, okay, all right. So what I would say is, you know, not standing with workers, I think that that's clearly incorrect. There's a reason why our three largest city unions have endorsed me and not my opponent. And it's because while we have some big disagreements on what is the right thing to do in the city, I still meet with them regularly and ask what are the things that we can do to do better, to make sure that your job is done properly. When it comes to the Safe and Welcome in Spokane Resolution, I voted against it because I don't support illegal behavior. But what I do support is making sure that people feel safe and welcome here. My family, we're missionaries. I have spent my entire life doing work for folks who are in third world countries, making sure that they have food, shelter, water, clothing, medicine, electricity, housing, all of those things, okay? I have constantly stood up for folks who are like me and who are not like me my entire life. And I will continue to do that. I've done that in the last four years. For example, I wrote a letter to the Trump administration saying, hey, on behalf of my community, I'm with you on the not letting more people come in illegally, but for the folks who came here and are now struggling to stay here legally, can we have some grace? I wrote that letter with a great community leader, Luke Jasmine, to Congressman Baumgartner to make sure it happened. I wrote a letter of support for Casamia to have their program that is protecting Latino women who are victims of domestic violence. I am constantly standing up for folks who are not like me, making sure that they are safe and welcome in Spokane.
I have one rebuttal, right?
We did ask a really long question.
Okay, well, I didn't know if I was gonna barter with it. Just let a girl know.
All right, we are going to keep things moving along. We have the library for a very short, limited time after this. So we have moved on to round three, our rapid fire questions. This is why we did not encourage anybody to save any rebuttals because we would like you, if possible, to please try to answer in a few words or one word would be excellent. At most, you will have thirty seconds for these answers, no more than that, and we will be pretty quick on the draw on these. And these will be asked by different members of the panel, so I think we will be starting on which end? Not with us, with them?
We're back to Bingle.
Back to Bingle.
Back to Bingle, baby. That's actually my campaign slogan, back to Bingle, so, yeah.
This question, do you know what the bus route is from your home to City Hall?
No.
I'd take North Foothill and Crestline on the twenty-seven, which I just put a bench there.
And no, I don't.
I believe I can take the four all the way downtown.
Yes, the twenty-three from my house downtown and also from where? Twenty-seven or twenty-eight to the City Hall.
Yes, twenty-three from Indian Trail, then twenty-five at the five mile connection and then down to the City Hall.
Well done, again with time, I'm so excited. This is, I'm gonna put my foot down. This is just a yes or no, okay? And we're actually gonna start then with Sarah and go this way and then jump back around. Does that make sense? You guys are smart. Sarah, should city council be a full-time job?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. No.
All right, we got kind of a two-parter here. We'll start with Alejandro first. For the incumbents, how many city council meetings have you missed? And for the challengers, how many city council meetings have you attended?
Four.
I watch all of them remotely.
Maybe three that I've missed.
How many I've missed or how many I've attended?
How many have you attended?
I think it'll be around two hundred forty. Is this still like a yes, no, or one answer? Or do I get to...
As the incumbent, how many city council meetings have you missed?
I'm not sure the entire amount. When my wife gave birth to twins, it was a very difficult pregnancy and very difficult time afterwards, so I missed some in there, but overall, very few.
Can I use my one-sentence rebuttal there?
Can you first answer as a challenger?
Yes, of course. Yeah. I've attended quite a few and have testified on behalf of a lot of them as well.
All right, we'll give you one sentence, Sarah, one sentence, no clauses.
I know when you were running for Congress, you missed quite a few council meetings, probably more than you just said.
Great. Starting with Alejandro, yeah. Oh, sorry, you looked at me with such panic. I was like, I don't know. Oh, we're starting with Kate now? Yeah. Should city employees be allowed to use AI tools like ChatGPT to draft documents or other work products?
I think it's a great tool, but like any tool, we need to have constraints upon it. So I think unchecked AI is never going to be a good solution.
Yeah, I think it depends and it could be efficient and save us resources, but it could also be dangerous too.
No. Yes, and just in the way that the internet changed the game for how people were able to do their job, I think AI is gonna do the same thing. And if we implement it well, it's gonna be a great thing for the city.
No, because it's really bad for the environment and uses a lot of water.
Yes and no. I think there's ways we can use it to be efficient at city council level, but also when it comes to personal messages to the public, I think that should come from the representative.
All right, Zach, we're gonna start with you now. In late August, we saw part of the Spokane River run dry. Should the city take a more aggressive approach to water conservation through increased fees or fines for excessive water users?
Yes, I've supported legislation for that, but I also think that it's gonna take more than that because it's from snowpack and greater climate change efforts, so we need to focus on infill development.
No, as a former Spokane Water Conservancy Commissioner, we really need to work and look into the Washington Department of Ecology because they set a lot of the water rights that actually incentivize more water use than what we're, than what to conserve it with. Yeah, you know, Spokane, we should be encouraging people to conserve particularly in difficult times such as now. I was surprised that council didn't take a position on that considering, you know, where we normally stand on that. But we actually did pass an ordinance as well that made sure that folks who are using the most water were paying more to where we didn't need to be raising rates for the entire city.
Yes, and I think the city needs to follow its own advice, especially when it comes to Spokane Parks. They're often watering large swaths of grass during peak hours and we also somehow have four golf courses, which I think is a huge waste of water.
Yes.
Yes, but at first I think we need to have one month or so of education because I do think some people don't understand what the rules are. We could give them a reminder. And then I think we need to address this use, especially with commercial users and our highest water users. And I agree with Sarah that the city needs to lead by example.
All right, another one, just yes or no, no explanation necessary. We're gonna start with you, Chris. Should city council meetings stay on Mondays?
Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
All right, we get the fun one from the Weekly Reporter. Who is your favorite local artist or musician? And we will start with Jonathan.
My favorite local artist or musician? Bing Crosby.
I love the Bedheads.
Actually, he stole mine because I went to Gonzaga and we have the Bing Crosby Theater, so...
I also love the Bedheads.
Chris Bovee.
I would say either Dario Ray, who is a musician, or Randy Campbell, who's also a musician.
Another simple yay or nay. And we'll start with you, Sarah. How are you slash would you vote for the combined Parks, Lebby and School Bond?
Yes.
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 No. Undecided.
Should the City of Spokane try to rejoin the Spokane Regional Emergency Communications Center, which is the regional nine-one-one dispatcher?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Absolutely. Is this still yes or no, or can we talk about it a little bit? Okay. I mean, it's a complicated issue. The way that it was, no, it was not working for our employees and, you know, we're having real issues. In theory, it makes a lot of sense to remove those redundancies, but in practice, we were struggling there and we needed to do something.
Ditto, actually.
I've already answered.
Great. Okay. I'm trying to decide whether I wanna leave this vague or not, but when people, when I go visit Seattle, I'm always like, wow, they have so much street meat. It's so easy to get food after midnight. Spokane needs more of that. So my question for you, and feel free to take this in whatever direction you want, what does Spokane need more of?
We need more reaching across the aisle.
Vibrancy from on the street to events to event, or street festivals.
We need more regional collaboration with our municipal partners in Spokane. Police officers and firefighters.
Transit-oriented development and upzoning.
Collaboration.
Great, congratulations. You survived, we survived, you guys survived. Give the candidates a hand. You know, at a more traditional candidate forum, you might hear closing statements. We are pushing on time and we also think that their positions tonight should speak for themselves. Feel free to connect with us or with these candidates. But also, you know, we've got eighteen minutes to mingle, but make sure you're out of here by eight PM sharp. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you.
She's a trooper. I can't respect her at all. Well, I have an ulcer, so there's no way I could, but you did every round, and I'm sitting there going, how does this woman do this?
I prepared. So, I was like going at Thai poses, ordering the like number five level spice. I made some of my friends, like, people take politicians through me, so I could practice the class. But I don't think anything came close to actually how spicy it was.
It was hurting my stomach watching you people.
Somebody took a picture of me backstage after round one, and I have red eyeliner on, and I have tried to like spread...
I can't see how you wouldn't, but it is absolutely the most unique thing I've ever seen. It gave me a panic attack, because I can't eat that kind of food, and I was just like, wow. So, I just wanted to let you know, there are some people, and I...